Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Presentations and recognition.
We have the NAIPAC presentation of annual compliance with Ally Middlebrook.
Welcome.
Slides to come up.
And Ally, do you mind introducing yourself? Not everyone has met you before.
Yes, so good evening. I'm here on behalf of the Native American Parent Advisory Committee, otherwise known as the NAIPAC. Thank you. My name is Ally Middlebrook. I am a district-wide social worker and I'm a district representative for the NAIPAC. This is my fifth year in the district and our fifth year having a NAIPAC in the district as well. Thank you. So, as I said, I'm here to present the Native American Parent Advisory Committee's annual vote of compliance. May I introduce myself already? So, per Minnesota statute, it states that a school district in which there are 10 or more Native American students enrolled and each Native American school must establish an American Indian Education Parent Advisory Committee. These are commonly referred to as APACs, American Indian Parent Advisory Committee. It's worth to note that our district's committee has changed that to Native American Parent Advisory Committee, which we call the NAIPAC. We currently have 44 children from 29 families who identify as Native American in grades K through 12 who attend schools in our district. And the purpose of the committee is to serve in an advisory role to the district and help ensure that our Native American students are receiving culturally relevant and equitable educational opportunities. So prior to March 1st of each year, the NAIPAC must vote on a resolution of concurrence. So when the NAIPAC finds that the district and/or the school board have been meeting the needs of our Native American students, they issue a vote and resolution of non-concurrence, pardon me. And if they find that the district and/or school board have not been meeting the needs of our Native American students, they issue a vote and resolution of non-concurrence. So this year, after that discussion and looking at some data, our NAIPAC voted in concurrence. So they feel that the district and/or school board are meeting the needs of our Native American students in our district. All right, and then I will provide a brief update on what we have been working on in consultation with our NAIPAC. So the NAIPAC meets five times per year. Each year, we apply for and receive a grant called American Indian Education Aid. The goals of this grant are to support post-secondary preparation for our Native American students, support the academic achievement, make curriculum relevant to the needs, interests, and cultural heritage of our Native American students, provide positive reinforcement of the self-image, and develop intercultural awareness among pupils, parents, and staff. So some programs that we've been, we've had available in our district that support the goals of this grant, we've done outreach to our Native American students and their families about the opportunities that are available to them. This fall, I partnered with Motomide High School's Counseling Department to bring three of our Native American students to the Native American College Fair in St. Paul. We have started a collaboration with District 622's American Indian Education Department on their family culture nights. Our families are welcome to join their families for that community. And then we're in discussion about a possible end-of-year celebration as well. And then we also offer ACT prep course and college application fee waivers for our Native American high school students. And some things we have coming up, we're exploring tutoring and possibly literacy enrichment opportunities at no cost to families of Native children. We're looking to provide summer enrichment kits to include books that highlight Native American characters and culture and craft kits as well. You can see on the right, there's a picture of these beautiful medallions that were made by a NAIPAC parent last year, and she made those for our two graduating Native seniors. And she's going to do that for our graduating seniors this year as well. You can see they have the Motomide logo and a feather, and they're just absolutely beautiful. So we hope to continue that. And then we'll also look at providing professional development opportunities for staff centered around Native American culture and history, including attending the annual Minnesota Indian Education Association Conference. And that concludes my update. So are there any questions I may answer?
Are there any questions?
Adam Church.
Yes, Director Donna.
Was there 20, how many families?
29 families.
Could you estimate how many actively participate in the committee?
Yeah, we have three families who actively regularly participate, as well as an Indigenous staff member.
Director Regan?
Are there any new topics or needs or things that have risen to the top with this advisory committee in the last year? I mean, I know that you've presented to us, you know, for a number of years now, but are there any new topics or things, I heard some of the things you're going to be working on, but anything that's bubbled up from parents or students?
Yeah, I think right now, what the parents really talk about is wanting to engage our students more. And so I have actually been speaking with a high school student, Indigenous high school student, who might be really interested in joining the committee. The parents would really love to engage our high school students more and get that student voice on our committee. So even though it is called a parent committee, our secondary students are welcome to be voting members of that committee. So that, I think that's kind of the recurring theme that keeps coming up that they'd really like to see.
Or comments? All right, well, thank you.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Again.
Thank you.
Great, and now Max, you are up.
My turn again. So first of all, I'm going to start off talking about what we're doing on student council right now. We're planning for our spring Parents' Night out, which is always super fun, watching all the little kids for a night. And we're also planning for prom. Now, at Wildwood, this, I believe in the last month, they had a book fair, actually last week, where they got to go down to the gym, buy a handful of books. And I remember doing these in my school. They were always super fun. And in their classes, they're actually making string bird feeders for their STEM classes. And the Motomide Adventure Clubber MAC childcare program, they had a sock donation goal, and they actually tripled that last month. And all those socks are going to the St. Andrews Community Resource Center. Now, at OHA, some of their grades got to go ice fishing out on White Bear Lake. And there are pictures of that on the E-News and the Instagram if you want to go check those out. And the student council at OHA actually put on a food drive last week where they made sculptures of their food in the best class, got an ice cream day. I don't know why they need more ice cream. Candy first, now ice cream, but if it works, it works. At the middle school, the Shrek Jr. performance is actually this, 20, on the 28th. And next month, March, on the 1st and 2nd in the Chautauqua, make sure to go watch the middle school play. I remember watching. I watched my brother last year, I told you guys earlier. Those are always super fun to watch. At the high school, we had Valentine's Day Bingo, which is their school-wide bingo event. That's always a hit. And NASA Hunch had their presentations in the Fab Lab last week. And I'm going to do a sports update since we have a lot of stuff going on right now. Now, Luciato is going to state for gymnastics. Luke Baipon is going to state for Nordic. Right now, girls' basketball are in sections. And Oliver Coe and Sam McDonald went to state for Alpine about two weeks ago. Now, right now, boys' basketball has their last season game before they enter sections. Hockey is in sections at the moment also. And wrestling state is this Friday with Evan McGuire, Aiden Carlson, and Aiden Bokes all competing for Motomide. And that about wraps it up for me.
Great, thank you. And now for our superintendent's report.
Okay, as always, I'll give you some highlights around the district, some awards and noteworthy news and upcoming events. Max already made reference to OHA going ice fishing, and you see a nice picture. I think we have some more pictures coming up. If you haven't seen them on social media, you should definitely check them out. Caught some big fish, had a really good time, lots of parent volunteers, some great pictures there, so. Had the opportunity to see our Wildwood and OHA student art at the Wildwood Library. And a lot of students came by to see their artwork hanging up in the library. I think, I, still going, just for a little bit longer. So if you haven't gotten a chance to see it, I think it's worth your time. So congratulations to all the students who who's art was chosen for participation. The Metro East Band Performance, we had 19 students who recently performed at the Band Enquirer Festival at St. Andrews. So they were nominated by their directors, and it's always a pretty amazing performance if you haven't been yet. It's an opportunity for you. There you go. There's another picture of OHA ice fishing. And I'll just, once again, encourage you to see some pictures. And I want to thank our science teacher at OHA, Katie Swor, I think it's Swarthow, is how, I knew her by a different less name last year. So she has, she secured that opportunity by getting a grant. So it's a, and it was a pretty awesome opportunity for our students. So we're still seeking volunteers to support our high school students for the Career Internship and Volunteer Fair on April 11th. Business and organization volunteers and also community volunteers. So if you have that opportunity, it's a great opportunity for you to meet our students and have a chance to talk to them, and also an opportunity to really support our students to review resumes and provide tips. Today, I walked into the high school and we had a, I'd say about 10 community volunteers helping DECA students prepare for state. So I think, and I want to say we have 45 students or so who qualified. So it was pretty great just to see all the, the community volunteers, whether they had students here or not, just, you know, sitting at tables and bringing kids through to help them prepare. So we really appreciate anyone who can help our students with us. The community ed catalog is now available. Print catalogs are going to be mailed in early March, so watch for that. And summer registration opens on March 19th. I know there are some, some classes that go fast, so, right, do people need to sit right by their, by their computer and get ready at 8:00 AM on March 19th? So once again, our Real World Design Challenge teams, we have two of them. One, the Team Zap, won the, does, does anyone from Team Zap want to mention anything?
Oh, man.
I don't, I could keep going, but Team, does anyone from Team Zap want to, oh, there's one here, Team Zap. So would you like to just talk a little bit about Real World Design Challenge?
Let me bring the mic back. Real World Design Challenge, it's an annual challenge where you're getting teams of seven in your school. We have three teams usually every single year. And they come out with a conceptual challenge. And this year, our challenge was, you know, design a UAV, an unmanned aeronautical vehicle, to fly 15 kilometers over wildfires and deliver, you know, certain supplies. And you have, they give us all the weights and sizes, and you have to create the drone in CAD and figure out, you know, how are you going to power it and the air resistance? And basically, if you had the money, we could make the drone. And you make this big notebook, you send it off, you go to state. And if you win state, then you get to go to nationals, which our second team actually got the wild card because they were probably the second-best team in the state. So we're all going to go fly down to DC in May, I believe, May 2nd through 4th. So that'll be really fun.
Congratulations to all those students. It's wonderful, and it's great that you get to go in person this time because it's been virtual for a while.
It's been virtual for like five years, so.
Congratulations to you and all the students who managed to state. So Max already went through all our state qualifiers, but we have some of those pictures here. But Alex Goldfine is also a state qualifier for debate. And this is the first person that we've had from Minnesota, sorry, from Motomide, qualify for the congressional debate category at state. So congratulations to Alex for that. Also to Chris Bennett for being selected to the Minnesota Grades 9-10 Honored Jazz Band. And to John over there and Anna, we have a number of students who have qualified or who have, or being honored for, for band. So congratulations to all of those students. And these are a couple, this is one of our graduates, Max Nelson. You might recall, he placed 12th in the Cross-Country Sprint Classic for men, the visually impaired men's race, and ninth in 10-kilometer classic. So he's, he's long been representing Motomide at, and national competition. So congratulations once again to Max. And I, I'm sorry, I don't know how to pronounce our, Jeong-Hung's, thank you, name. So he placed 23rd in the Cross-Country Sprint Classic. So congratulations. And he's class of 2025. So is he someone, someone you know? Yeah, so how about that? So congratulations to both of them for competing at the World Cup. We have a class that we started just a couple of years ago at Motomide Middle School, and it culminates in the state future city competition for some of our students. And so we did have a group that went, so again, we're kind of, we're newer to future cities, but this time, this group, the Clovers team, was a special award winner at the competition, winning, earning the best land-serving practices. So, so congratulations to our future city group. We have a couple of students of the month, from 916 Students of Month, so for diesel trucks and also in dental careers. So our students do participate in our 916 programs, and it's exciting when they win this award because they are with, with students from across the metro area who participate in these 916 programs. And just some upcoming events, if you haven't gotten your Zephyg gala tickets, those are on sale, so I'll put in a plug there. And I want to thank Kate Anderson, Community Ed, for that middle school youth night. That's, that's a pretty fun event, I know, for kids. And so thanks for putting that together. And if you do have time to come to our community lunch on March 5th, I know it's in the middle of the day, but that's always a fun time also to have lunch and meet some people throughout our community that are primarily have, are not currently, do not currently have students in our, in our district, but are part of our community. So with that, that is my update.
Thank you. Okay, where are we? Oh, so now we're onto the board member calendar, which is what I was comparing that to. So does anyone have anything they want to point out on the calendar? I will point out that on March 24th is our Zephyr Learning Showcase, and that's always a really fun event. And I think we will have the Real World Design Teams here, which by the way, I think you forgot to say, wasn't this your Motomide's 10th time-winning first place at state or 11th? So many times. Anyway, I think they'll be here as well as obviously groups from all of our buildings. So then you can get a, a close look at what they're doing. And then I, I noticed on your calendar, Barb, it said April 11th is the MHS Career Day. What day is the Zephyr Gala?
The 11th as well.
That explains why I had it written down on my agenda last time.
There it is.
Thank you. Okay, so there's two things going on that day. MHS Career, which is, I think, a great event. We're, I mean, I think we're probably full on volunteers at this point, but. Okay, does anyone else have anything from the calendar to point out?
I'll just call out, I'm not seeing it, but I'm probably missing it. The community luncheon, the date on that, Kate, is that on here? Am I missing it and it's on here?
No, it's not. It's not on our calendar. It was on Barb's, though, I think.
Oh, that's where I saw it. Okay. So that's a fun event. And if anybody's free that day, it's really great because you really get to have conversations with community members that we maybe don't see every single day. So it's a fun event if you've never been there.
And Paul got shushed at one of them, right? He was having too much, he's at the fun table, so.
That's right.
Be there again.
I'm, I'm getting there before Paul, so I can get to that table. Okay, anything else? All right, then next on the agenda are the second reading of policies.
So these are brought forward three times before action. And after my, after the first reading, I haven't had any questions from board members or from community or any other feedback. So I have them there for our second reading, but I don't have any updates to any of them.
Does anyone have?
I just have one question. And I think I asked this last time, but I just wanted to be sure when I looked at this again. So the, the only question I have is the 613, the graduation requirements. When I was looking through that table, it really looked like it was more of a rewording of things, not changing of any credits. Am I reading that correctly?
If I recall, and so Jen Reichel is in the audience, it had, it did have to do with, I think, if I'm not mistaken, health and FIAID were listed as electives before, but they actually are, they've always been required. And so it was just a...
Well, and then we also have personal finance.
And personal finance is a...
It's not required by state law.
But the science, social studies, and math that were kind of crossed out in the bottom, it was sort of rewritten up above, right? That part was, it stayed the same as far as credits. It was like...
Oh, yes. And so that whole box was crossed off to be replaced with the new one up above.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Hey, any other questions or comments? Okay, so this is our second reading, so we won't do anything with it tonight, but we'll have a third reading and vote on it at our next meeting.
So if there are any questions or clarifications you need before then, please let me know.
Okay, now for action items. Approval of donations and grants for February 2025 totaling $4,482.19. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
By Director Regan.
Second.
Second by Director Donna. Any discussion? I would like to note, all donations and grants are greatly appreciated. The use of these funds will be to further the mission of the school district and are used towards the wishes of the donor. That, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Now for approval of the 2025-2026 budget reductions and adjustments.
So we have been talking, we have been approaching this day for a little while now, since I think December. And at the last meeting, we brought forward, the administration brought forward some, some recommendations for budget reductions and adjustments. The PowerPoint that you're going to see is largely the same as the one you saw at the study session. And there are a few things that we've clarified or added a little bit to in order to help with some of your questions. Thanks to all of you for meeting with me individually and kind of going through your questions so that we could be prepared to talk about this a little more tonight. I do recognize that there are going to be some things that you still have questions about, and so we are prepared to continue to work on those items that you have questions about when you, after this meeting. And so we'll continue to move forward. But we are asking you to approve those reductions that you are able to this evening to get us started. And then we'll move forward on continuing the conversation at the March meeting as well. So with that, we'll get started with this. I do have the clicker. Do you want me to click?
Sure, yeah. Do that, that's fine.
Get us started. So just as a reminder, we are, you had some options in the study section, study session, and then you gave me some feedback. And today is for you to take some action, take action on, on some of these options. Again, as a reminder, like most school districts in Minnesota, we're facing challenging budget times right now. And in last year, we made about $700,000 in reductions, primarily at the secondary school and district-wide. And so for this year, we're looking at an estimated budget reduction of about $2 million. So I'm going to, do you want to take it from here? Do you want me to keep going?
Sure, yeah, either one.
You go for it.
Okay, all right. So when we look overall, as Barb mentioned, 2 million, we're trying to fill a $2 million gap. And so that would be a combination of revenue raising, reductions in expenses, and then use of fund balance is what's on the proposal. The amount of fund balance that we're looking at using is 792,000. That's a, that's a pretty specific number. We do know, as we're going through these, the state is coming out with additional information on their budget. So these things are subject, subject to change, but this is, these are our projections and assumptions at this point. So fund balance policy, that's linked. Of course, you've seen this before. And after that, using that 792,000, we're at about 8.28% projected on the fund balance policy. So when we look at fund balance, and there's several reasons we want to have fund balance, when we're looking at 8%, which is the, that's the, that's the threshold of the board policy, that's about 29 days of cash, or 29 days of liquidity. There's a lot of different ways to put that. But if you had, if you, in a scenario, that's what we have. And ours isn't really, that isn't really uncommon, that 8% isn't very high. The Government Finance Officers Association recommends 16%. And that's if you don't have things like questionable revenue streams, you know, those types of things. The other thing that it does, that it helps us out in, is when we're looking at building bonds, you know, we just refinance some bonds. It, it does play a part. Having a strong fund balance plays a part in getting a lower interest rate. So it, these are, these are really, you know, probably the big, the big three things. And it also adds stability. If we have fund balance, we can stabilize programs and that type of thing. We can't keep going back to that well, but we can stabilize programs by dipping into it one time, building it back up, that type of thing. So any questions on fund balance? All right, we'll go to the next one. So again, our proposals, revenue adjustments. What's on the table right now is a 20% increase in activity fees. They have not been increased for several years. And so the revenue estimate there was, that would raise about $56,000. And then looking at class size, a class size that returns to pre-pandemic levels. And so we look at K5, based on resident and open enrollment applications, that would be raising another $429,000. So additional, additional enrollment there with resident students and open enrollment. We also have another piece in there for community education. That is a totally separate fund from the general fund. And that's what we're talking about tonight is general fund. That accounts for most of our activities. Community education costs, cost sharing for, for revenue, that's about a $40,000 increase to revenue. So we're looking at about a half million dollars in total of revenue coming in to try and offset and lessen the amount of expense reductions that we need to do. Any questions there? Yes?
Yes, I thought when we compared, Barb, can you explain what Erin said about increasing the fees even though we're higher than surrounding districts already?
I don't know about even though. I don't know what that part means. But he did say that we have not increased activity fees in, in several years, and it's the case that we are on the high side compared to our neighboring districts. So that is one thing that I know that the board wants to, based on conversations with some of you, or... So that is one thing that I know that the board, um, wants to, I, based on conversations with some of you, or I've, I've heard that come up a couple of times, to be able to look at, um, at those activity fees. That was one of our recommendations, but remember, all of these, with all of these, these were our recommendations, and at the, and as a board, um, if there are some in here that you would like us to reconsider, that is, that's, that's what this process is all about. But it is the case that our activity fees are on the higher end compared to our neighbors, that is true. We are not the absolute highest, but we are on the high end. I do have, I do have a new slide compared to last time, because I had a couple of questions about, um, class size at the elementary, so I do have for you, um, just when I, when I'm talking about the recommendation to, um, return to pre-pandemic levels for, at the elementary. I have a couple of, um, slides here, so I took the average of the three years before the pandemic of the class sizes in kindergarten, first grade, second, third, fourth, fifth. And just what the recommendation was for us, what we're, what we're recommending, and this is, you know, to be responsible, we have a, we do have a, a responsibility to use our tax dollars well, and so the recommend, we did bring our class sizes down during COVID. In particular, um, twenty twenty-one, they were really low because we were, we had some, uh, requirements around physical distancing. And then, as we've been coming back, those, over the past few years, um, we have, uh, our class sizes have remained low. We've, some of the grades have come up a little bit from there, but, um, part of it, too, has been enrollment, so our enrollment is now creeping back up and is, um, it is rebounding, and so, um, we are looking more, this coming year, we are looking more like we did in terms of both resident enrollment and open enrollment applications, more like what we, what we did during, um, the years prior to the pandemic. And so that's why we are recommending that increase in class size at the elementary. I'll also say that we have, for a long time, used the Bright Work Study to compare ourselves to other districts, and so we always talk about the metro average when we talk about, about our class size at the elementary. I will say, um, districts have started, not as many districts are participating in the Bright Work Study anymore. And so the usefulness of this data might not, uh, it ge-, gives us an idea of, of how we compare to our neighbors. Our immediate neighbors, our class sizes are below in K-five, but, um, but it is difficult to compare across the metro area when not everyone is, is participating. So when we talk about the metro average, it's maybe not as strong of a metric for us to use in the future. So nonetheless, this is what we're recommending for, um, next year, for class sizes at the elementary. Do you still have questions about that recommendation? I've had a lot, so I just want to make sure I've clarified that. Okay, thanks.
Back to you.
Okay, so, under proposed expenses, so we'd be looking at, uh, reducing the number of sections in elementary, and that's based on the current enrollment. And you can see the, the amount of estimated savings on that. Um, class sizes would be one above the twenty-four, twenty-five metro study average. And then reducing high school and middle school sections based on enrollment and student course, uh, choices. So combined, high school and middle school, uh, reduction would be estimated at a hundred and forty-four thousand. And then other staffing, reducing facilities and ground staff hours, uh, restructure of technology support, and then a reduction in extra service contracts, and that's estimated at one hundred twenty-four thousand. So, um, that brings us to a total in those categories of four hundred twenty-eight thousand. Any questions on that one?
Director Regan.
So the, the one where you're saying the bullet point reduce high school and middle school sections based on enrollment and student course choices. I'm, I'm going off of this now, the, the spreadsheet. I'm assuming that's the, um, one where you're talking about maybe having like a low enrollment courses, or potentially of electives combining, or, or like a, a threshold?
Yes, so I tried to give you some ideas of how the decision would be made, so, um, we, every year, we look at our enrollment. The current eighth grade class is the small class that's been moving through our system for quite some time. Uh, we don't know what it'll look like in ninth grade, but, um, it has been a small class for us. So we're, right now, it looks like it will be a smaller class compared to the other grades at the high school. So we look at enrollment to determine what, how many sections we need of a, of a course, that's one example. Another thing, uh, we look at is how many students are enrolled and you have chosen a certain course. One of the things we do prioritize are those small classes, if they're kind of at the end of a, end of the, I don't want to say end of the line, but when we, like, I'm just going to take, like, if it's, um, a course, like a, a language course, and we want to offer the highest level, um, of world language. That would be, even if it's a small enrollment, that would be something we would prioritize. But other classes that could potentially be offered every other year, we might look at doing that. We have done that in the past, so those are the kinds of things, the decisions that, um, our administration makes when students enroll. But we would be looking at not being able to offer as many of those smaller classes, which we have been able to do this year. So some of it is really responding to enrollment, uh, it's responding to student choice, and it will just mean that we're tightening up a little bit.
I mean, I guess I'll add a yes and to that. Obviously, this is done every year, that if there's courses that don't have enough students for them, but this is, this is maybe get, maybe not offering some things that maybe we would have because we're, the, because of the, the numbers being low, and that's kind of the first items that then are not offered.
Right, that's, that's definitely part of it, and, you know, that'll make some other class sizes larger, so that is part of the reality as well.
What, what level of enrollment is low that would be the cutoff that you came to the hundred and forty-four thousand on?
I can tell you that. So, um, our high school principal used twenty as a place to start. He said, you know, any class that's below twenty, and then he looked at those. Um, he looked at classes that maybe were, you know, there's only one section, and it was below twenty, and I will say also, that is based on this year's. So when that number, when we asked him to do this, he looked at what decisions would he make differently this year if he had needed to make these kinds of reductions based on the enrollment. So this, the reason this is an estimate is it's still going to be dependent a little bit on what we get for student enrollment as well, so.
Don't we have spring enrollment for high school, existing high schoolers for next fall?
Well, it, um, it just wrapped up, so.
Enrollment, but s- class selection, like, so we would have a, we would have a pretty good idea what this number would be soon.
Fairly soon, but not, not right away. So the other, I mean, other parts of this, just the comple-, the reason we're asking for you to make these decisions tonight, quite honestly, is there's a lot of complexity in figuring out, um, what courses we can offer, who's licensed to teach them. And there's just a lot of, of things that are going to happen after this, so even though you might want something a little more specific, it'll take us a little bit down the road before we're able to share that with you specifically.
Director Peterson.
Point one, isn't that specifically second and fifth grade?
It is second and fifth grade at this time, that's what we've, uh, based on enrollment right now, um, we would be looking at, um, reducing, the, the second and fifth, one second grade section, one fifth grade section. However, if we get more, um, enrollment, then we would look at potentially adding that back. But at this moment, that was, the, those were the numbers we used.
But that keeps the class size the same as what we discussed earlier.
Right. And again, if we get, so just, I mean, to be clear about some things, if we get more resident enrollment, and that would push us above what we've agreed, what I'm recommending for class size, that would be an opportunity. We have a number of, um, families on, on waiting lists for open enrollment. And open enrollment then allows us to keep our class sizes small, so we would add a section back, and then we would be able to add additional students, which, um, helps us in lots of ways, um, in terms of revenue, and also just the number of students, um, who are committing to joining our school community as well. I mean, let's, these are people, so, um, let's really be clear about that as well. But what that does do for us, it also helps us, um, if we get to a certain number, that also helps us with our budget as well, to be able to add that section back.
So my question about that is, what is that number to?
We typically, so, we typically use twelve. Um, the reason we use twelve is because whenever we, um, offer open enrollment, not everyone accepts, um, the enrollment, and so that might drop down a little bit, so, um, twelve is the number we've typically used.
Just want to be really clear in my brain on this. There are open enrollments, open and closed, right? I mean, you've done the drawing, filled spots, correct?
We have, um, so the first window, um, is, has closed, and we have offered, um, spots to people where we have, um, space at this time.
And then, because second and fifth, there were not enough open enrolled families in those grades? Okay, yeah.
So then we held, so then we held up, well, it wasn't that we didn't have enough open enroll, but yeah, we didn't have the twelve to put us to that.
But that could change.
That could change, I mean.
It's not closed.
Right.
I didn't mean closed.
Okay, yeah. It could change, I mean, again, we have resident enrollment, we have residents move in.
Yeah.
That bubs the class size up again, then it's, um, then we would want to add it back, and we would want to open, open enrollment. Any other questions about that? Are there any questions about any of the other items on this?
On the other staffing, is this, this isn't where you're including substitute?
That's, right, that's next page.
Okay.
So, um, yes, so to your question, is it purchase services, that's, uh, that's contracting with our substitute, our company that provides substitutes. And when we're looking at, this is, this is kind of a hodgepodge of things, they come up with ninety-one thousand dollars, so it's, a large part of that is substitutes. We have some utility costs that we think we can push down a little bit, uh, commercial insurance, and then, uh, travel for professional development. So all of those things in total come up to ninety-one thousand. And then, we have supply reductions, a much smaller number. We've reduced supplies before in the district, uh, now, most of these are regard, in regard to facilities and ground supplies, where we can push those costs down a little bit more. And then, the other reductions are in teaching and learning, and, uh, curriculum resource, resources and planning, so that's a hundred and four thousand. So then, if there aren't any questions on that one, I'm going to keep going. So then, we've got a summary, so you can see the, see those categories are just summarized here for you, so you can see the total impact. So increasing the revenues by a little over a half million, expense adjustments of six hundred eighty-three thousand. So that gets us to adjustments of one point two million. And so that erases one point two million of that two million dollar deficit, and then the, the plug here, if you will, is use of fund balance of seven hundred ninety-two thousand. So that brings that to the projected fund balance percentage of eight point two eight percent. So that's, uh, again, very specific right now, um, we're going to be coming back with updated numbers on a regular basis between now and June, because there's a lot of things that will be happening at the legislature, et cetera, and we'll want to make sure that we're, you know, we've shored up these things as accurate, accurately as we possibly can. So, then we have the timeline as that last page.
Um, I think, uh, board members asked last time, what is point two eight percent?
Oh, right, yeah, so, the point two eight percent is about a hundred and fifty thousand. So the, that's, so that, if, if you're looking at that, we're a hundred, at this point, we're a hundred and fifty thousand above, uh, the minimum in the board policy.
Okay, so, um, this is your opportunity to kind of talk through these, uh, recommendations together as a board, um, and we are requesting that you take action, tonight, to help us continue to move forward with what the administration needs to do. With, uh, all the work that needs, that is ahead of us, so.
I, I do want to address the reduce the number of low participation programs and reduce transportation costs. I'm okay with reducing the transportation costs, especially where we know they're not being used, that buses aren't being used on return trips. On the low participation programs, I don't want that on the list, and I don't know how other people feel. I, I thought it was interesting, we have someone going to state for debate, and that's a low participation program.
Yep.
So I, I would like to take that off.
Okay.
The list. I, but do others want to weigh in on that? That's just my opinion, I just, I guess others need to weigh in. Yes, Director Peterson?
Stacy, were you going to ask, I wanted a little more clarification to our follow-up on the classroom substitutes? Where do we cut, where is?
That's in that purchase service.
No, I know.
Oh, okay.
But, but how? How, how do you save money on classroom substitutes?
Well, so, yeah, so a little bit, a little bit more background, and I, and I think I mentioned this before. When I looked at our, what we're getting, what we're being charged, um, over the past three years, it's gone up about an average of roughly ten percent a year. So that's, that's part of that number, and I want to make sure that, you know, folks understand that. The other part is there, there are some things where we find, we, there, there are some things where we find we may not have to have substitutes as much as we've had in the past under learning services and that, or teaching and learning, that type of thing, so. Do you bet?
But also, I mean, I've advocated for this before, too, is that, um, I do, I do believe that there are times when, um, particularly high school students don't need a substitute all day long, um, when there are things that, um, teachers can prepare for them to do more independently. Doesn't mean that every time, um, someone's gone, we need, we don't need a substitute, but I think there are ways that we can be more efficient with that as well.
Director Regan.
Um, so we've talked about this, and I've said it multiple times, but, and I just want to say it again, that, you know, I mean, none of these are good things, and that nobody wants any of these items on the list, and the ones that I feel as though I'm, I guess, I don't know if supportive is the right word, but I guess I can live with, are the ones that impact the classrooms the least. And, um, and I know that all of our supports and all the support staff and everybody is important as well, but, um, some of the, some of the things that, that I'm struggling with a little bit are, oh, gosh. You know, I, I feel as though the, the class size one, obviously, um, at the elementary level, if that helps us initially, I guess I just, that when those students enter our system, then they're in our system all the way through, hopefully till they graduate. And just wanting to make sure that we have the capacity for them, then all the way through twelfth grade, that, and then, but then, as I think about if we're really truly living out our strategic plan that talks about students pursuing their passion, I struggle with, like Stacy said, removing something that has maybe low enrollment for an activity or a course, so I guess I would, I would love to see like how we can creatively, if needed, combine courses, or have kids, is there a way, and maybe licensure is an issue, I'm not sure, but instead of just cutting courses, but if we have a threshold, is there a way to combine any sort of offerings or anything? I don't know, is there any, I'm not sure I'm totally making sense here, but I really struggle with like less opportunities for kids around activities and athletics and in the classroom, so I guess I'll start point by point and just mention a couple of them. I struggle with reducing the offerings for low enrollment because of the, you know, the Zephyr Learning Showcase. What we saw today in the presentation, what we see every month, are all the students in, interested in all the different things that they're interested in, and so we have so many different skills and things like that, that students want to pursue their passions with, but, so what could we do to keep those things, and again, that number's really low, but then, like, some of the things, some of the services, can, can we maybe talk about some of those services first?
Could I, could I make a recommendation?
Yeah.
So if there are any things on, on the list that you can't live with, I would recommend we start with those, and then we can go back and look at other things. Like, if there are things on here that you just feel like you need, you need to take off the list, even if we need to come back again and say, we still think this is the reason we should do it, which may not be what, or it would be that we come back with a new idea, that could also be the case. Um, but if you could start with, what I'm hearing from two now is that reducing high school activities with low enrollment is just a non-starter for you. Is there anyone else that wants to weigh in on that?
Director Donna.
I understand the concern of eliminating low participation electives or activities, but at some point, I mean, I, I think I need more to really fully understand, what is low participation? Because if we're going to have an activity that has two or three kids in it, I understand how important it might be, but if it's going to cut, if it's not going to be cost effective, that's the wrong term to use. If it's, we really need to look at that cost benefit with respect to low, low activity, low participation. I, I need more information before I'm comfortable just taking that off the list completely.
Well, I think if we say we're taking it off the list, just meaning she will then bring back more information for us.
Okay.
We just won't, because we're voting tonight, and I, I don't feel comfortable voting on that one, because to your point, I think it, it is a low savings, so it might, the cost benefit might come back, and it's worth it to keep it because it doesn't cost that much.
Okay, thank you. And then, secondly, if I could, if, if we can move on to one other that I, I think the activity fees, I'd like to visit, revisit that, get more information on that one.
Director Peterson? I, I can't vote on the 20% activity fee increase.
Okay, and that's what Paul just commented on. Director Whitson?
Barb, could you clarify? I know certain, some of these things you said are very iterative in nature, right? To, to increase enrollment, the sections, it, there's things you want to start right now, right? I think of things like activity fees that I don't know and wants to do it, but that is something that doesn't require months of planning, right? And so there's, for the right phrases, right? There's some sort of like critical path on things that have to get started today. Can you help us understand on these list of things, which are, which have the longest path towards execution, so we can know to prioritize? Because we can, like, no one wants to do activity fees, but we could do that at a much later time because of the complexity of executing that. Can you help us understand from your perspective, what is the best ability for you and the rest of the administration to start?
Yeah, so, maybe Tim, you can join in with this too. The revenue increases, I think the elementary class sizes, pre-pandemic levels. The decreasing grades two and five in reductions. High school as well. The tech integrationist, because that also has some staffing implications. Part-time cleaner has staffing implications. Substitute usage, I mean, that's something we need to plan for. Textbook and online subscriptions, I mean, that's, I'm just looking to Jen for this one. I mean, we could postpone that, but I, I don't know. I feel like there's a solid plan, and I think she's got a pretty solid plan in place for how that's going to look. Facility and ground extra service contracts, I would imagine that we'd want to start planning for that as well, because that'll be some shifting of, of responsibilities. Is that accurate? I don't know, I just don't think there's, I don't know, the increase insurance.
Yeah, that one is, that's not, that's, that's a soft estimate. We, we have to go through some insurance proposals, so.
I think, I, I mean, I think anything that relates to staffing in particular are the things that are difficult for us to, we, we need to start planning for that so that we can figure out how to staff and, and communicate, because that will take quite some time, so.
Director Domon?
So I've got two questions, I think, one for Tim, one for Barb. Tim, just to help us level set for the audience here, thank you guys for attending, and for anybody that's watching online tonight, what are the, the main drivers again that are really driving this, this deficit that we're trying to address right now?
Well, yeah, there's, there's a few different ones. I mean, one of the, one of the big ones is, again, when we looked at the ester funding we had, and that dropped off, so that was a million dollars of revenue lost compared to last year. So that's, that's one of the big ones. You know, we have infla, and if we look at inflation, that's another one. You know, we, like everybody else, we have, we, we have folks we employ, we have contracted services and all of those things, as I mentioned, even, you know, we look at the substitute cost by the increases that we're getting from, from the company that we do most of our substituting through. All of those things are adding to that. The other piece of it is that, you know, when, when we did some longer term, some three-year projections, we kept those, we, we kept the average daily membership, which is just, it's a headcount of students essentially, not that simple, but it is, is kind of a headcount of students. That's what we get most of our funding based on. And we kept that relatively flat. The one thing that I really do think that Matamida is tremendously fortunate to have is the demand for kids coming in. And I, and I'm talking, you know, that's open enrollment, because we can manage a budget, and you can see it here. You know, instead of having, instead of having, you know, $2 million in cuts, we're using some fund balance, but we're also offsetting a half million dollars by, by having that open enrollment in, and keeping, and still having manageable class sizes. So there's, you know, it, it's, I just talked to, I talked to a superintendent from another district last week, and they have a completely opposite situation as Matamida, where they have, they're, they're losing students like crazy, they don't have the demand for open enrollment. It's, it's very difficult. So I, I just can't emphasize that enough, is, is managing it responsibly, I think is really what I'm, what I'm talking about.
Yeah, absolutely. And then also, like, isn't part of it also some partially funded state mandates that are making it relatively challenging as well?
Yes, yep. So we, yeah, so one, one's unemployment, and that was a, that was a new law that was passed in the last biennium. The, the governor's proposal on the table has a way to fund that, but it also includes the Q comp going away eventually. So, and, and again, that's the governor's proposal, there's a lot of work to be done between, between both houses until we get to a, to a final point on that. But that's, yeah, that's a six-figure cost for us.
Yeah.
Possibly in the future not funded at all, so.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to kind of level set, to make sure that we're all on the same page with what we're trying to solve for, right? And so on one hand, like, constraint can be good because it causes us to kind of reexamine our expenditures and make sure that we're spending in the right spot, and maybe eliminating expenses where we can. And I'd argue that historically as a district, Matamida has done a pretty amazing job doing significantly more with a lot less than other districts. So like, that's great, I guess we have experience kind of going through these things. But on the other hand, it's pretty awful to talk about, you know, increasing class sizes or reducing offerings and that sort of, those sorts of things. And to put the fund balance part of it into context, I know you mentioned this, Tim, but like, one month of operating expenses when the majority of our expenses are people expenses, salaries, that kind of thing, like, that's, that's real, I guess is the best way to put it. So, long-winded comment and question to get to my question for you, Barb, is that when we go through these, let's try to view it through a lens of what can be temporary as we look to address our operational budget situation going forward here? And what's going to have the shortest impact that we can potentially rebound from over the coming years here, if that makes sense? And I don't know if anything on that list rises to the top in your opinion, but if there is something, like, let's, th, th, those are the types of things that I'd be more supportive of.
Which types? The types that are short-term?
Yep. And I, and obviously the ones with the highest dollar amount, probably.
Yeah, you know, one of the hard things for me about that question is that, you know, I know we're, there have been a lot of questions about increasing elementary class sizes, and I, I feel like I've tried to give as much context as possible. What we're, what we're recommending still keeps us lower than our neighbors and many other districts. And so, I, I don't know, I know, I know that maybe that was one that you were hoping I'd say, hey, we can go back, but I, I don't know that that would be responsible, honestly, and I think we still can. And, and we might want to look at the class each of the grade levels and, and talk through what my recommendation is, if you want to look at those, then that would be fine with me, or get recommendations from our elementary principals if any of these are off. But, yeah, I think, I think it's, I think what that recommendation is, I think it's a reasonable one, and I think we can look at it the next year too, and not automatically go back to what we were before, even if we want to prioritize like K1 or whatever. I think there are a number of things, like you've said, that on this list that I think have allowed us to rethink how we're doing our work, that it is a reduction now, but if we weren't in this situation, we might have chosen to do it anyway, just on its own, because we thought it was a better, it was, you know, what we do. So I'll just say, I'm in teaching and learning, I know Jen went through subscriptions that we could do differently. And that will be something that stays, you know, because it's, it just makes sense. So I don't know that I'm prepared to offer up that we would immediately go back to any one thing. I, I, you know, we'll always look at enrollment, we'll always look at course offerings, and that's always part of what we're doing. We're just doing, we're having to do it a little more this year. So I don't, I'm sorry, that might have been long-winded to say I can't answer it.
To be clear, I'm not asking you to go through and identify this, this, and this. I'm just saying, like, as you offer us guidance in the future, like, let's keep that, that point of view in mind.
Okay, I think I finally have a question that actually will make sense, probably. So sorry about the last one, but I just have too many thoughts about all of this. And so my question is, I know some of the earlier presentations, when we started talking about this, we talked about maybe potentially using half of that money from the fund balance and half of it from these different cuts. And so when you said, Tim, 0.28 is about 150,000 dollars, essentially, I mean, if we were to go down to 8% fund balance, we could maybe not increase those class sizes at the secondary, things like that, like, something like that could be possible. I know you're asking for what we can't live without, and I'm telling you, what else can we live with? And, and are, are there any other positions or things that have been, become available since COVID, because a lot of school districts introduced new positions and different, they were doing, we're doing business differently since COVID, and schools everywhere having to make decisions based on now more pre-COVID numbers? So I guess my question is two parts. One, you know, I guess I would like to explore more the possibility of, do we, are there reasons why we should not go to that fund balance minimum of 8%? And two, do we then also, you know, again, that would maybe look differently as far as that, I don't know what number that is, the high school secondary? And then two, are there other positions or things we're not considering? I know it was brought up about transportation costs, like, we've talked about return trips for athletic events. If, if those buses are coming back empty, that seems like that's maybe not a good use of our money. Things like, are there positions that have been added in the district that, since COVID?
I feel like I've answered that question a few times, so I'm not sure what you're looking for with the positions that have been added. Like, what, what more detail do you want on that one?
So, okay, so we've talked about in here about a potentially a technology integrationist position being cut. Are there any other positions like that, that are newer positions since COVID, that, or not?
So the tech integrationist proposal, just to be clear, is to reduce that, that one district-wide position and replace it with building level lead stipends, which will, I mean, it, it's a different model, and it is a cost savings, but it's also a different model that involves building capacity as well. So are you asking about the, we do have right now a literacy coach that is working with our elementary, elementary and I guess maybe some middle, but no, I think it's just elementary on the implementation of the new, the letters training and the new curricular resources. That was put into place at the start of, it was during COVID, we had some more flexibility, but we also knew COVID funds were ending, and we didn't see the inflationary increases coming when we projected out that we would have that position for three years. We've had it for two. We are recommending keeping it for a third, but if you would like us to explore that, I don't know if you're asking for us to explore that position, but that is a position that was, that was added to support the, the heavy lift of what we're, we're doing in literacy. So that would be an example.
Are there any others? And is that pretty much it?
Well, I mentioned before, we added a paraprofessional at, at the middle school. We added that during the pandemic because we had a number of, of students who would be absent for long periods of time and needed some additional support to catch up. She also continues to support our students who are on 504s with accommodations, and so that is a position that we added during COVID, and we're recommending keeping. Let me see, I have, here, there was, I'll have to look. We added a study skills course at the high school, and that was, again, to support students with the transition. And, oh, and the other one that we still have that we had added was, we, we added additional literacy time at the middle school, and we, that was a sixth grade course in reading and a seventh grade course in communications. That course now is a, you know, it's, it's, it's a class, and it's part of, it's a required class in sixth grade and seventh grade. But at the time, when it was first developed, there was additional time for her to develop each of those courses. So we did use, even though she was teaching the class at the same time, we offered her extra time to develop both of those courses. So she no longer has that time, but she does have those courses. So those are, those are ways that we used our pandemic funds that continue. There are things that do not, that are not continuing, but those are the ones that are, those are the staff members that, those positions we added and continue.
Director Whitson?
Yeah, so, sort of what Ryan said is that as we look across these cuts, there's no, there's never, there's never a right answer to cuts, there's only trade-offs, right? And I think, I very appreciate you putting some additional context and some other options here. So if you look at this sheet towards the bottom, there is additional positions. As we think about making trade-offs for keeping staffing at the high school, it falls down into the next category, right? And these are specific positions that you said are kind of the next tier, not your top recommendations, but if we had to go below, we had to keep some of the things on this list that we couldn't live with, these are the next positions below it.
Yeah, and I'd want to be really clear, that's not how I see it. So I offered to you, the, those are things that we discussed as, you know, you've asked me questions about, about these positions a couple of times, so I was trying to share with you the specific positions that either one of you had asked me about, or we had talked about it as administrative team. So it's not necessarily that I would say, go to the, go to the next line. There are also things that we've talked about that we can't really quantify for you at this time. So for example, our example of reducing, moving to more electronic, using fewer copies, moving more electronic. I don't know how to quantify that at this time. One of the moving, or we have, our advanced academic teacher has created all sorts of opportunities for us, but we could always move those opportunities to community ed as an example of something. And so these are also things that we've talked about. There are a couple of things that, in teaching and learning, that we, we want to really invest in our new teachers, and so we didn't put this on the list, but we could look at it, and that would be reducing the number of days of teacher, new teacher workshop from two days to one. We could have mentors working with two mentees at the same time. We hadn't put it out there because our opinion is we need to invest in our new teachers and support them, and so that wasn't one of the things we brought forward. However, they are ones that, I know that you wanted to see some of the other things that we talked about, so that's why they're there. So the, the only reason I wanted to make sure I jumped in was just clarify it wasn't that next up is, is this. So it would be that we would have further conversation for you. And if you have strong opinions about any of those and want to weigh in and ask us to come back with other recommendations, you could do that. I was trying to be helpful with that. Was there more? I'm sorry, I think I interrupted you, so.
That was my next question. That was my next question. Just walk us through the list of things.
Okay, okay.
So to add on to Drew's, so when you come back with additional information, there'll be a discussion of what trade-offs there may have to be and what we can, okay. And then secondly, if I could, to maybe put a little bit more perspective on this, can we, can you put up the next slide and walk us through that? Next slide, because people were talking about temporary cuts and, but it doesn't get any better going forward if nothing changes. So.
Did you have one more question?
Oh, sorry.
Before we go to that slide?
Yeah, I was just going to comment on the, it's on the list here. I don't think it's under consideration for the literacy coach. Based on the direction of our strategic plan and the foundation of literacy, for me, that's got to be off the table. That's not even a consideration.
Which one?
The reduced literacy coach.
It's a position, I was asked about it because it is a position that is working with teachers and so it wouldn't affect class size. And so that's why it's there. Again, it was put into place for, as a three-year, a three-year position to help with this transition. I am going to advocate for it because one of the things we are priding ourselves on is our implementation of, of the literacy, the literacy work. It is, has been a big part of our strategic plan. And the work that our, our teachers have to go through to really implement both the, the professional learning around letters and the new curricular resource is, is really quite something. And we want to make sure they're supported so that it's done well. So anyway, that said, if that's something we need to talk about some more, we can. But that's why it hasn't been on our list.
So we've included this in the, in the agenda. This was a projection, a three-year projection that Finance Committee reviewed on January 27th. So almost a month ago, as things have changed a little bit since then. But this is kind of telling tonight. I'll just run through the assumptions quickly. So the next page. Can you, Barb, to click it?
Oh, I'm the one, sorry. I have a toucher. I didn't hear you.
Okay. So it's important to keep in mind, so these are, these projections are before taking any action on the items that you're considering tonight. So they don't include that. So again, in this projection, the, the enrollments held relatively flat. Aid and levy revenues under existing law, well, that may or may not change. The basic aid increase is 2.53% in this, in this projection. And that was, that was an old project, old estimate back last year in February. Now they're coming out with a new February estimate, but they're not coming out with it until March. So we'll come back when, when they plug that in the CPI, essentially what, what it is, is a CPI. That's going to determine that, that range. So that range, as it is currently in law, is between 2% and 3%, where the basic aid is increased between 2% and 3%. So not a lot of wiggle room there. It isn't, we aren't going to see a 4% or 5% unless they change the law, which probably I would guess would not happen, especially this, this biennium. The referendum revenue step-up is included here, and that's about a $940,000 increase. So it's important to keep in mind, even though we're having this increase, we still have budget deficits going forward. This, this assumes no unemployment aid, so that was what we were talking, Ryan, you brought, had brought that up. So this assumes that that fund, that funding has run out. The, the federal revenues are flat, so in this, in this case, and that's, that's, that's about where they should be. We're not seeing, you know, we have very low federal revenue here because we just don't have those accounts for, for free and reduced lunch. And then again, I want to emphasize, when you look at these projections, they don't assume any budget reductions. So, okay, so we'll go to the next page. So I'm going to, I'm going to really focus in on that third line down where it says revenue over or under expenditures. And you can see a projection for 24, 25, we're at $2.3 million is where we have projected that, that budget deficit to start occurring. And then I'm going to go to the next year, 25, 26, and you can see that's about a $2.3 million deficit. And then it goes up from there in 26, 27. Now, these are rough estimates, but you can see the pattern. And, and we talked, you know, we've talked about an operating referendum. And so you can kind of see why we would need to do that.
Is that based with, on two and two coming from the state?
That, right, right now, we are projecting, yeah, that would be, that would be the, that would be the minimum of the two and the two for 25, 26 and 26, 27.
Oh, it's not the 2.53 and two?
I'm, I'm sorry, 25, 26 is 25, 3, and 26, 27 is back down to two.
But that could be higher if they passed more.
Right, it could go, yeah.
Okay, and then are those numbers based on if we were to not pass a referendum and it just renewed at the exact level that this year?
Yes, yep, so, yeah, great, yeah, great questions. No referendum, none of the budget reductions or revenue enhancements we're talking about tonight are included in this. This is just, just kind of the, the raw projection of not doing anything is what it really is, what it really represents. And then you can see how that affects fund balance. And that percent unassigned is that second section down at the bottom, percent unassigned. It goes from about a 10.6, the next year goes up 5.6, and then we get, actually get into a negative, where we get to negative 1%. So, any questions on this? Okay, so that was, that's the projection. So now if you want to go back to the other items.
Anyone have questions on this at all? You could, do you want to take that down? Do you mind taking that down? Do you need to go back to the other PowerPoint or?
No, I think we just need to make sure we know what we're voting on.
So far, what I've heard is to remove the activity registration fees. I've also heard to remove the reduced high school activities with low enrollment. And two things that you would like to take off and ask for us to come back with more information.
So then, let's say we remove those, is, I guess what we need to hear from everyone is, is there anything else you want to remove from the list for voting tonight? It doesn't mean it will be off the list forever. So looking at the chart.
And then also, what other things would you like us to look into in terms of other areas that you feel like we needed to explore, but then that would be something else?
Oh, Director Peterson.
A general question, the way you start every year with, we need these teachers for this class and this, this class of kids has this many students. At the bottom, under transportation, if there's a bus only picking up eight or nine kids on their route, is that the bus transportation's job? They say, all right, Bob, you're going to go get this route because we're combining, consolidating. Do they do that?
Yes, yeah, our, our bus consultant and company does that. They do the routing. And, you know, we've, we've looked, I've had some discussions with them on if we can cut additional routes. And right now, there, there really isn't, if, if nothing has changed, if, you know, because we have two tiers. And one of the issues is, when we go far north, we're picking up a lot fewer kids, but putting on a lot more miles. And there's just not enough time between the secondary start time, time and the elementary start time to reduce another, another route at this point.
We've also, just to add on to that, we've also explored increasing walk zones, but we have a number of what's considered a hazardous crossing. So it's like, you know, Wildwood, there's no way to walk, not to have kids walk to Wildwood and call it a safe walking area. So, so that's another issue that we have, where other districts might increase a walk zone. It's difficult for us to do that because of how our schools are situated.
I guess the question is, is everyone good with voting on what's on the list? Or are there other things that you need to come off the list?
Is also voting to approve bringing the fund balance down to 8.2?
It is. Oh, yes, good point, because that's not actually.
And leaving on the table for it to be.
I mean, it could be. We could always come back and say more.
Is it accurate that as we, as we solve the problem, or as we solve part of the budget deficit with the fund balance, because that is a one-time solve, it increases the potential for what we have to cut next year? Because it's a one-time fill?
Right, but I think, so in this case, if the, if the reductions are permanent in nature, then, but if we, you know, if we try to bring back things and dip into fund balance again. I mean, you can see in a projection, by not doing anything, we're going to have, the fund balance will drop pretty quick over a couple of years. And so, yeah, that's pretty tough in that, in that situation where you're dropping in fund balance and you're dipping into it. It's pretty tough to be able to go back again. Now, if we were in a budget situation where we had a surplus and we could build and then knock it down, build, knock it down, but we're not in that situation.
So the, the projection, projections you showed did not take into account the final numbers of what they'll receive from the state or, well, I mean, because we don't know. And we also don't know, it depends on if we pass a levy.
Right.
So the levy, the levy is what would make up that difference.
That would change, yeah, that would change the picture.
We're not counting on ever going into the fund balance in the next two years. I mean, that would be pretty devastating. So we're trying to make sure we do it this year to keep us going, but we're counting on passing that levy. So we will be in trouble if we don't pass the levy and we would have to make significant cuts because I don't think, I mean, you'd run out of money if you didn't cut more. So that said, is everyone comfortable with the cut where it's at? I mean, the usage of the fund balance where it's at, along with these cuts? Or do we need to discuss more options?
Again, are there other things you want us to bring back and look at?
I don't think there's any other good options, otherwise that would have been surfaced by this point. So it's an awful reality to be in, but it's a tough decision we have to make.
Hey, is there anything else, any other questions or comments, and then we're going to vote?
Two things we've removed are increasing activity registration fees, about $56,000, and reducing high school activities with low enrollment at about $4,500. Those are the two so far that I'm taking off. And we'll come back with other options for you.
So with that, I need a motion for approval of the 2025, 2026 budget reductions and adjustments. By Director Donna?
Second.
Second by Director Whitson. Any discussion? We've just had it. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, that was, thank you, Tim, thank you, Barb. And thank you for everyone for your thoughtful input. And I know it's just extremely challenging times, so I appreciate everyone's efforts in this. Okay, now we have school board committee reports, AMSD. Director Donna?
So we met last week or the week before.
February 7th.
February 7th. And we heard a presentation by the Superintendent of Schools in St. Cloud related to artificial intelligence. And my takeaway was, well, what they did is they've really gone, they've been very proactive in their district relative to AI. They've certainly been met with challenges on how, you know, to embrace AI and how to manage it internally with, with students and the staff. And I think they, they came away with some pretty interesting observations related to how it's used, the drawbacks and the benefits. And I, I'll, I think I'll circulate that presentation because I don't have the details. But I think suffice to say that obviously it's on top of us and it's, and it's here and it's something that we have to work with. Or else it's just going to, you know, it'll, it'll, it'll take us, it'll take over in, in could be harmful ways, but there's could, a lot of benefits with it as well. I don't know, Barb, if you have anything to add, because.
No, it was just, it was a really, a really good presentation. And, and the thing that I think is really, the reason they're doing as well as they are is because they have teacher leaders who are really digging in on what it looks like, specific in their content area. So it was, the teachers in particular were pretty compelling with what they're working on, so.
I'll circulate that presentation because there was some good takeaways.
Okay, MAFE report, Kelly.
Um, MAFE met on February 18th last. And as you can imagine, this is really the, part of the work is around the gala. So make sure you mark your calendars for April 11th is the gala at the JX in Stillwater. And the fund in need this year is around new playground equipment at specifically OH Anderson and also updating some equipment at Wildwood, making that equipment not only more modern, more age-appropriate, and also more inclusive. So the April 11th gala, I'm hoping that I can count on seeing the board members there with me. And it should be a fun night. A couple of other things from MAFE, really quickly, they are, they just finished their Hearts of Gratitude. Where K through five, every staff member was given a heart of gratitude, and that's the fifth year of doing that activity. And then they're in scholarship season right now. So some of those scholarships will be closing here in the next month. One of those I wanted to call out is a fine arts camp, the Carol Fargo Scholarship for Summer Fine Arts Camp closes February 28th. And all of that can be found on the MAFE website. And then lastly, I wanted to also call out that Suzanne Anderson, the executive director, will be retiring in June. And so they are going to be searching for a new executive director for MAFE. And that is all I have for the MAFE report.
MSBA report, legislative update, Jenny.
Funding from the state, I know a lot of this already talks about what Tim talked about, but funding between 2% and 3% this year. A lot of questions about what President Executive orders will change policy language and if it's a state or federal. And then Tim already talked about Q comp being phased out. And if you want that explained better than I can, ask Barb.
And it, and it's in the governor's proposal.
Yeah, so it would still have to get through the legislature, okay. And we have, we do, we are a school that participates in that, so we would be affected. And our teachers who participate would be. Okay, that's it, thank you. 916, I forwarded the report, so I think all of you have that, so I will move on. Any other board reports? Yes, Director?
I have one, and that was from earlier this evening on the 24th of February. The facilities meeting happened and taking a look at some of the summer projects. And let's see here, I'll start with a couple of items. And that would be using some LTFM dollars for some needs at, at the high school stadium. Some of our lighting and fixtures and things are not working, wiring is bad. There's all sorts of issues that those were due to be replaced a long time ago. There's also in conversation about improving some of the hockey rinks, the district ed center hockey rinks.
the District Ed Center hockey rinks and partnering with the Hockey Association to split the cost of that project. And then I guess the only other major update is the DEC IAQ, the indoor air quality project, and some of that work being done this summer, starting June 6th. And yeah, that is all I have. Anything else, Barb, that I missed from that? Ryan? Okay.
Any other board reports? Yes, Director Peterson.
Two quick ones, if you don't mind, if I go back to back. The curriculum committee, I sat in for Kelly, and it was about Witten Wisdom. And then does our strategic plan and our school mission align with our literary literacy vision for our school? And I thought that was a great comparison. Are we hitting the points in our strategic plan with our vision with Witten Wisdom and Letters and the Read Act? And they go together really wonderfully, if you want to see it. And then Gifted and Talented had a speaker. Instead of doing the regular parent discussion, we had a guest speaker in on the brains of those kids. And I do need someone to sit in for me on the Gifted and Talented meeting on March 20th. So let me know.
Any other reports? Okay, thank you all. If I could get a motion to adjourn?
Move.
By Director Regan.
Second.
Seconded by Director Peterson. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Post, motion carries, so we are adjourned.